I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order at 5:45. Thanks, everybody, for being here on a special occasion, a sort of non-regularly scheduled meeting. I'm also glad to be here this time, to have remembered the meeting. Are there any agenda revisions?
Can we add some discussion to communications to the community, maybe at the end of this meeting, and either talk about what the executive committee wants to communicate to the community, or what the full board might want to do?
Yeah, sure. So we can add 2.1.3, or actually, that's 2.2, I guess, is communication. And I'll just say that, you know, I'm fine with that. I do want to try to keep to our hour timeline, because everybody's made a special effort to, so whatever we had time for, we can do. I also will suggest that, because we have guests this evening, that we'll reverse the order of our two Act 46 items and address the, our outreach to Twinfield first, so that we can have our students free to go. Any other agenda revisions? Any public comments and correspondence? Executive Committee comments?
You wanted me to get a sign-in sheet, I didn't do it. At least, are you all set with names?
I think I've had everybody.
I'm going to ask people to go around and introduce themselves, actually, for a second, so. Okay, so we'll move to 2.1.2, which is on here as the Twinfield proposal. So I guess before we get started, Bill and I can report out, kind of, our making a connection with Patrick and Mark last night with the Twinfield Board, and then we can ask if our colleagues would like to say anything as well, but I guess first we'll go around and do some introductions. So, I'm Matthew DeGroot, I serve on the Worcester Doughty School Board, and I'm the Chair of the Washington Central SU Board.
Dorothy Naumburg from Calis Board.
Steve Look from the Eastmont Pilier Board.
Patrick Keely, I represent Marshfield, and I'm also the Chair of the Twinfield School Board.
Bill Kimball, Superintendent Schools for Washington Central.
I'm Kari Bradley from the U32 Board.
Chris Winters from the Berlin Elementary Board.
Dorothy S. Eastmont Pilier Elementary Board.
Brian Telly Pharo, Romney Board.
Mark Cockler, I'm the Superintendent for Washington Northeast Supervisors Board.
Chris McPhee from the Romney Board.
Rick Keane from the Calis Board.
Okay, thanks. So, everyone's aware that the Executive Committee voted at its last meeting to authorize Bill and myself to reach out to the Twinfield Board about exploring a possible conversation about collaboration, what that might look like, if there's any interest, et cetera. So, we did that. Our initial meeting was last week, I think it was Friday?
Yeah, I already can't remember. Friday.
Friday. And we just had a brief meeting here at the Central Office, and really, you know, didn't come to any conclusions, but just kind of talked about, you know, what we've been asked to do, and trying to get a sense of if there was interest, you know, the, I would say, I would say, their response, I think, Mark and Patrick can speak for themselves, but their response was more or less, you know, "We've always been interested in conversation, we've just never had anyone to talk to." And Twinfield had a board meeting last night, so we asked if it would be useful for us to go, we did. Had a spirited conversation there last night, I think anyone that's been in an Act 46 conversation can imagine many of the different dimensions and aspects that came up. But generally speaking, the Board, I think, and again, they can speak for themselves, but my sense of that meeting was that there was some interest, at least, in having a conversation. And I had suggested an idea that each Board might appoint two Board members to work with the two superintendents, to kind of take that conversation to the next level, maybe coming up with a list of questions, and topics, and, you know, sort of initial discussion. And we could do that for Washington Central this evening, we could talk about sort of the procedural aspects of that, and then the Twinfield Board has another meeting, I think, in a couple of weeks, in which they could take that up as well. So, Bill, I don't know if there's anything else to...
No, I think it was, you know, it was very positive and optimistic, the meeting the four of us had here last Friday and last night, of, hey, let's talk about opportunities. And no limits to the conversation, or bounds were put on it, and it was like, it's worth the conversation, and I like it, something I've heard from Patrick for two or three years, I'm always willing to talk about what's going to provide more opportunities for students. So, that, I think, is the spirit that was had last night, and that's the spirit I saw from the Twinfield Board. You know, as you said, it was very spirited, but that was an overall tone that I heard of, was opportunities.
So are there any questions or comments from the Executive Committee members before I invite Patrick and Mark to say anything I'd like to say? Hearing none?
Well, we're open to discuss, we want to know what are you guys all about? We'd like to learn more about your schools, and see, you know, we probably, you know, kind of stay up here right now in the clouds a little bit, find out, you know, figure out somewhat of a game plan of what, how we're going to lead the conversations, and what we're going to talk about. You know, we should probably just start with, you know, who are we, and, you know, some of the demographics, numbers and stuff, and then, you know, you look at strengths, and, you know, also realize, let's make the list of what the questions from our public are going to be, so that if we get to that, but it's always, you know...
I always like to think broad first, and then start zeroing in, because we have no idea what the Board has got to do with us, but we just want to talk, we're excited, so, we're excited that somebody wants to play us, and we just need to, you know, I'm always excited to get out and see other schools, and talk to other schools, and see what they're doing.
My perspective on this is, I think that there are great things that you folks do here, and I think there's some great things that we do at Twinfield. My suspicion is that neither side knows what the other is good at, and what the other could bring to the table, and I think, you know, in terms of representing the interests of Twinfield, I think there's some good stories that we can share with you to help you to understand why we think Twinfield is a successful school, and we want to hear from you, you know, what your strengths are, what, you know, I think, in thinking about what I heard at the Board last night, and what I've heard over the last, I don't know, what did we decide, three and a half years that this has been going on? The focus at Twinfield has always been on what are we doing for our kids, and what is the best, are we doing the best things that we can for the kids? As long as we're having conversations with that is kind of the main artery running through it, I can say it that way, I think that, you know, the possibilities are almost limitless, because, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we love the kids that we have, the community loves our school, and I think that those are both, those are two good attributes to bring into any kind of a partnership that we might form here, or elsewhere, I mean, that's, we're not currently talking to anybody else, but, you know, Berry was the other SU that the Agency Secretary had kind of flagged as a potential partner for us, and we haven't, we haven't had this level of conversation with them, because they're, right now, they're stuck in the 706 process, and I'm trying to find out if they're anywhere near getting unstuck, to be perfectly honest, because we're, we want to explore all of our options in the, you know, in the sense of what's good for the kids, so. But, you know, as Matt said, and as Bill said, the conversation so far has been very, I think, positive and cordial, so I haven't seen any red flags, nothing that I'm concerned about or worried about going into further discussions, so I'm looking forward to seeing what we could do together. We talked last night at the, we, the Board talked last night, some of the members talked last night, kind of stridently about making the case to the State Board, you know, and I think as soon as we start talking to the State Board about any conversations that we have with any other district, that's going to start to influence their thinking on where to place us. They kind of left us hanging out there, unassigned and unmasked at the moment, so, but we do intend to go to the State Board and report to them on, you know, we've made contact with you folks, and how those talks are progressing, and, you know, I suppose it's possible, if we never get to sit down with Berry, then, you know, it could turn into fait accompli as far as the State Board's concerned, but we'll see what their thinking is. Somebody asked me the other day, well, what are they going to do? Like, I don't know, I don't think any of us really know, we all have our concerns and fears, but we'll see, we'll probably find out. We're at the end, we're in the endpoint of this three and a half year trip, and we're finally going to find out where we've been traveling most times, so, but it's, I'm glad that we're talking.
It seems like that the compatibility of the communities would all be pretty good with, you know, and I'm curious with, if it would be better than Berry.
I don't know how to judge that, I mean, I know, I've heard people say that, and I've heard people say it the other way, so I don't, you know, I don't know how, I don't know how to assess that, right now, I'm not saying wrong, but I just, you know, I don't know enough about it.
What I would assess it as, the students are going to be compatible with students all over.
Whoever they go, and wherever they go.
So sometimes we have to put the parents and the community to the side, and just say, hey, kids, how can we make it better? Because whatever we have, you know, there's a little disgruntledness between Cabot and Twinfield, but when the kids come over for summer school, we had summer school that shared over a hundred students, many from Cabot, they all play well, they all work well together, but sometimes it's the grownups that have issues.
Cabot players are playing on the Twinfield soccer team this year, we have a cooperative sports agreement, and that's, that's going well, you know, they wouldn't play otherwise when they happen to be playing, so, you know, it's, like Patrick said, it's usually, it's not the kids that are having difficulty with this, they're, they'll adapt to pretty much anything.
I think it kind of comes to that, it seems like trying to do things in a way that, you know, the communities keep their identity in all of it, and not just, I mean, that's one of the great fears, probably, I mean, I've witnessed through this whole process statewide, you know, it's, and felt, with that, you know, however that, if that, I think it's a good idea to look at this, but keeping that in mind, that, I think that helps adults, like the transition.
So we are an example of Act 46, because Plainfield and Marshfield got together in the late '60s to develop the high school, Cabot had the choice at that time, but they stayed separate. So I think we're kind of like, our mentality is just different than separate schools and separate towns. And, you know, we kind of have our school in the middle of the two towns, it's actually in Marshfield, but it doesn't matter, it's in the, in the middle of two, you know, Plainfield's over here, and Marshfield's here, so.
Geographically, yeah.
Works center.
Yeah, that's a good...
So I thought that was a good idea.
It was probably thought of together, you know, that's why it worked.
So we're not, you know, we're not, we don't have Plainfield versus Marshfield.
So I do just want to acknowledge that, you know, there is this huge towering question mark over what's going to happen with the State Board, and, you know, we have a lot of guesses, nobody really knows what's behind door number two, but just acknowledging that there are some sensitivities potentially around that, around, you know, what you're communicating to the State Board, and how it may look, you know, these kinds of things, and, so, you know, we'll do our best to try to, you know, respect that and be sensitive to it, and vice versa, I would hope to, but, you know, I would just echo, you know, what all of you have said, which is that the most enjoyable part of the conversation was the very explicit focus on, you know, what we might be able to do together to produce better opportunities and better outcomes for kids. So that's what excites me about this, you know, conversation. So with that being said, you know, we can have some more discussion, I assume since the Committee already voted to pursue this, that there is interest in pursuing it, so before we might entertain a motion around, you know, designating a couple of people to do this, I guess I just wanted to ask, first of all, if there's any objections to moving forward that way, and then, secondly, if there are people who either are interested in doing it, or would like to nominate someone to do that.
Well, as far as people, so, and I'm not trying to suggest, and Kari's the U32 rep, if we're going to have two people, I think it's essential that one of the two people be from the U32 Board, because there has to be, I feel like, a strong, you know, I would say one from the elementary and one from the high school, but I feel strongly there has to be someone from the high school in those two positions.
Will we only pick them from Executive Committee members, or any Board member from the full Board?
What I would say is that we...
If those persons may not be here.
I mean, that raises the procedural question, which is, I think that tonight we can probably take a decision to move forward this, we would probably ask on the 26th at the care of some meeting for the Boards to ratify that essentially as a...
We're running into a timing issue, though?
Are we running into a timing issue?
Yeah, in terms of picking, you know, it sounds like sooner is better for everyone involved.
I would suggest the sooner, to start the conversation, the better, and I would suggest that, in my opinion, Matthew had offered this last night, and I thought about it over the 24 hours, that there's a place where you want, there needs to be bigger input and bigger discussions, but to move things faster, move things forward more quickly, to have a smaller group is going to be a better way of doing that, and trusting that to go do that, or to gather quite, you know, it's not making decisions, but it's to gather, gather the information.
Well, I'm just, my, and my point is only that it need only be someone from the Executive Committee, or can it be someone else here? Like, anyone in this room who is a Board member, who's here and has shown interest?
Yeah, I mean, I'm open to any suggestions, I do think that people in this room are, you know, up to speed on this already, so maybe have an advantage in terms of getting out of the gate quickly, but, you know.
To go further, I'd be willing to do the work.
Hey, Kari?
I'm willing, I don't have any particular bet to do it, but I like Stephen's thought that U32 was half the student body as you're here every night.
Scott, too, if you're interested, you've been in this fight.
Scott's a nice choice.
Kari? Thank you, my friend. No, I'm happy, obviously, to be part of, you know, anything, any constructive conversations, and I would share, you know, with the U32 Board, and with you as a representative of that Executive Committee, if you wanted to do it, I'm, I have full confidence in you as well, Kari, but if you thought it would be good to mix up, not have just two, smart fewer people, I don't know if that's an issue.
That's good, rock, paper, scissors.
I'd be willing to entertain a motion to appoint two people to engage in an exploratory conversation with the Twinfield Board.
Is there a problem with the rate?
A problem with?
Three people, and do you folks, the Twinfield have any, it being three?
Well, no, we have no problems with numbers.
Okay, then, who do we appoint? Stephen, Kari, and Scott, to engage in exploratory conversations with the representatives from the Twinfield Board, Community.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay, thank you. So, yeah, thanks for being here.
All right, thanks.
We can set you free.
Can we, can I just get the three names, I have them, Scott, I know.
Stephen Look, L-O-O-K-E.
Kari, K-A-R-I, Bradley.
Mark, you and I can email and put together a list, and I know you have, you have, what, two weeks to your next meeting?
Yeah.
To figure out if that, I heard some possibility of me, plus a little bit, it sounded a little funny.
I know how that goes.
I do know how that goes. But Mark and I can put together some information, I guess, probably pretty quick on budgets and demographics and things like that.
You're welcome to stay, you're also welcome to go.
I saw legal on there. No, no, thanks for giving your words, but...
Thank you for coming.
Nice to meet you.
See you.
All right, so we will move to 2.1.1, as it is on the agenda. And essentially, the background of this, I'll just sort of give you my thinking of why I felt, and Bill, I think, also felt that, you know, we should be, we should call this meeting, and I'll invite Scott also to comment on this, since the document is one that he drafted. So Scott, to his great credit, has been working on trying to imagine or think through, analyze, maybe, what would be possible ways of addressing what, for lack of a better term, I'll call it, a debt-to-debt issue, if we were to be mandated to consolidate by the State Board under issues with its plan, and this two-page document that was shared around was the, are the fruits of his labor, so, you know, there's a kind of legal argument in here about, you know, why it's appropriate for us to do this, and then there are four different options of what might be done. When I got this from Scott, I looked it over, I thought, there's some interesting stuff in here, but I'm not a lawyer, I felt completely unprepared to comment on the sort of legal aspects and ramifications of this, or even evaluate it, so I thought we should probably engage our attorney to review it, and kind of give us some thoughts. Bill had a conversation with our attorney, it quickly became apparent that we might need two attorneys, given the particular specialties involved here, and that then became apparent that the costs of engaging two attorneys to do hours of research and, you know, cross-comparison, and do a written sort of evaluation of this could get high pretty quickly, and that's something that someone other than myself and Bill, you know, should be weighing in on. So the point of bringing it to the Executive Committee is to discuss, you know, do we want to pursue, do we want to engage attorneys to conduct a legal review, and maybe give us, even beyond what's in this document, their opinion of, you know, kind of what the law says about, you know, debt consolidation, and what is possible and what's not possible, and if we do want to do that, then, you know, do we have a certain amount of money that we'd be willing to spend, and do we want to cap it at a certain level, and, you know, these kinds of things, so that's the point of bringing it to the Executive Committee.
I'd like to back us up just for one second, same topic. I'm trying to understand exactly what our options are around articles of agreement, because as I, as I read through this stuff more, I'm, I'm less confident we can be proactive. So I don't know if either of you have any thoughts around that. As I reread everything a week ago, and particularly on the State Board's thoughts around who could change articles, it seemed to me those were the articles, period, and there was no opportunity to propose an alternative proactively, it could only be done after the fact, and they were suggesting who could do that after the fact.
Yes, since that's come out, there's a lot more delineation than there was in Act 49 about amending articles. I will tell you the first, in-depth read, where I actually read every word, was today, I just haven't had a chance to go through it with that, and started to write off a timeline, and like, which, you know, which articles could you do that in, that, you know, which ones could voters amend, and they have a summary at the end of the document that says, and there's some pieces that are 60-day, and this I have not mapped out, I need to write it out myself to really totally comprehend it, about what can be done through a transitional Board, to voters to do between 60 days and 90 days after the articles become approved by the State Board, and I don't have all that detail done yet, Stephen, but that was part of what I was working on this afternoon, for around an hour, just trying to map that stuff out, of which articles, and, you know, there's not only a, there's a time, and there's a who can do it, and which ones can't even be done by voters or the School Board. And there's a prior to 90 days, and a after 90 days, and after a year, different timelines, and I know that some of you in this room have read them a lot more than I have, so I won't say entirely.
I guess that's what I'm trying to gauge, the ones that may have grabbed, read them My reread and thinking through it is, the articles they have listed are the articles that will in fact be imposed, and prior imposition, we have no input, post-imposition, it suggests there can be input, and who should have the input, should it be voters, should it be Board, should it be that stuff, but I could see nothing in the language that said we could propose alternative articles prior to a forced merger, if it became forced, everything was post-merger, and I could be wrong, I mean, it's just my reading of it, and it's, we all know, it's not the easiest thing to go through, so my concern would be if we're going to, would be if we're expending money on lawyers to review something, that none of us may be in a position to favor or not favor, because it'll be in the hands of a transitional Board, it won't be in our hands. I don't necessarily think it's a wasted or a bad decision, I just, before I'm comfortable spending money, I would like to have an understanding of, of if it's proactive or reactive.
Well, what, you know, that's the interesting, I'm curious, and, you know, a possible strategy would be, too, with, with that transitional Board, I don't know exactly how that's going to be created, but I'm assuming that's going to come out of the existing structure.
It's spelled out precisely now.
It's the chair and clerk of every existing Board.
Of every Board, so the question is, could we actually kind of informally come up with, you know, basically, an agreement that those members, we know who those people would be, and that we actually do do the research now, but then, there would be more or less a rubber stamp, and it would be a, you know, it would be a step, we would be depending on honor in that case, because it would not be, they wouldn't be bound, but essentially, if we, you know, did the homework, and we did it within the bounds of how that's defined in the law, then would we be able to basically predetermine what that, what those new Board members are going to adopt? I don't know, it's just a thought there, you know, that's, they are us, right, I mean, essentially, they are made from our Board members now.
I guess my point is, what I'd like everyone, encourage everyone to do, I mean, it's just my reading interpretation, for everyone to closely reread the stuff around, and the articles that the State Board has presented, it's all in the first couple paragraphs, because I just, I just took that we had two or three months to propose alternatives, and then when I read it in depth, I didn't see that, I didn't see that we have two or three months to propose alternatives, what I saw, what I saw, just me, was that these would be the articles, and then, once they're imposed, these would be the way the articles could be amended, but it would have to be post- these would be the way the articles could be amended, but it would have to be post-merger.
So I don't see anything stopping us from exploring this proposal and seeing what the legal ramifications are, whether it can be done, can't be done through the different options. And if we're looking at a post-forced merger timeframe, that sounds fairly short to begin with. I think not having this information at the outset, or the beginning of that timeframe, it would be problematic in terms of good decision-making. I think we can certainly get answers, and you wouldn't buy any transitional board, but it could be advisory. And, you know, this is a hot-burning topic for everyone involved, so I think having the answers, to the extent that we can get them from a legal perspective at the outset, would be helpful.
That's smart, because I think time is going to hit us. If we wait till, right, we won't have the time, given those deadlines.
Well, and, no, go ahead, Rick.
Well, I'm a little bit, well, not confused, but I definitely got the idea earlier on that the state was going to put out these articles of agreement and that we would have 90 days. Or if we start now, more than 90 days to, I got the idea we could write our own, so, but maybe, I'm not going there, whether that's right or wrong. What I'm going at is, then if their articles of agreement are what are the default articles, and we can't change them, since the debt, the transfer of property and debt of merged districts is in those articles, if we're not going to be able to change them, I definitely want to know if I can use one of these, but are we? I, I think we don't really know what we can do at this point. Maybe Bill does, maybe somebody does, but I have the feeling that we thought we were going to be, I remember being at Board Reunions where we thought, folks, you got to get your act together. You're going to have to work on these articles and the budget and do this and that. And now, all of a sudden, you're saying, no, we can't do anything. And I find that, I just, I don't think that's, I don't.
My take is that you're all partially right, that we will have these articles handed down to us, and then we will have a period of time, I think it's 90 days, to amend certain ones.
Certain ones.
That'll be the, one of the jobs of the, I think it's one of the first jobs of the transitional board, is to set a meeting date and decide what will be proposed. And that, in its 90 days, I think we have, you know, very little time to get ready for that.
That's right.
So what I would suggest is that we do have some legal analysis of what our options are specifically around what, you know, what articles could be amended and then specifically around debt. And if we have that information for the next executive committee meeting, then we can plan on the forward.
I, I agree, wholeheartedly.
And also just get a sense of what type of legal expertise we need in terms of types of lawyers, and what our anticipated potential costs may be.
Well, that's, I talked to Scott Cameron about that.
Yeah.
And Scott said, if you want a written opinion, he said, he doesn't know how many statutes this is going to have to cross-reference into municipal law along with educational law. We talked about, you know, that he was thinking that he may need to work with someone like Paul Giuliani, who does the fiscal piece of it, but there's the educational piece of that. And he said, I, I asked him what he thought for time, and he said, Bill, I don't know right now. Because I don't know what I'm on earth and how deep you want us to go. And he said, what do you think? And I said, well, I would think that ranges with our different board members on how deep and how exhaustive. And that's when I came back to Matthew and said, I think you should have a conversation with the executive board about the limit, dollar limit. Because not, you know, it's $250 an hour for all the different attorneys we use. That's our retainer. And that's our billable piece, depending on which of the four attorneys we use. But that's the, that's what we have with the agreements of, so.
Do we, can we kind of stage into this, Chris? Maybe you've got ideas. You know, I, obviously, I mean, there are going to be, we could get into a real rabbit hole here, but is there a way we can engage them at that superficial level and then develop that understanding the deeper we go? I mean, I'm guessing that this would be really hard to, there's got to be a lot of law around this that they're going to be referencing, so, I mean, I.
There's probably not much law around it.
There is a big.
So they're a scrap, no, because it's a new animal, and I think they're.
It's a what?
A new animal, and it's kind of Act 46, and it's not even the debt.
Scott, did you give me opinion?
Yeah.
But it was a legal, it was a thought opinion that, if you'd like that, he didn't give it to me in writing. He gave it to me verbally on the phone. I'd be glad to tell you his legal opinion, and you'd have to decide as a board if you want me to do that in executive session or not. And I'm not trying to do it that way. I just want to know where you go before I tell you what he said.
Sure.
You know, what his thoughts were about it.
Well, I, regardless of how it's been, I think it's prudent for us to set up a legal fund with some kind of parameters, some kind of boundary, or, but to set it up and to allocate some funds. Because regardless of how it's been, I think we need to have funds available to ask lawyers questions. And maybe it's more initially not a deep dive, but, you know, what are the thoughts on this, or what are the thoughts on that? Or as we head into this process, we would like you to look at what the state board has said and make sure we're understanding the interpretations, that kind of stuff. Could be used anyway, but I think it would be prudent to set up a fund, so that it's available.
So let me come back to that in a second, but I want to, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just thought our question is, to Rick talking about the rabbit hole, I can't imagine that we're the only set of school districts that are wrestling with this issue. And has no one else looked into this already, that some of the legwork might have already been done? That we can somehow access or perhaps share the cost beyond our walls, or, you know, our towns? If there are other schools that might be also looking, this would be helpful. Thought.
There are.
I just want to give Scott a chance to see it, because he brought it forward, so I wanted to.
Thanks. And answering your question, Chris, and you, Brian, if there were such a place, I would love to get to know it. Because the whole thing has felt kind of lonely all this time. There are very definitely other districts that are wrestling with debt issues, but I guess they haven't been going down those rabbit holes as much as we have. And thank you, Matthew. The reason why I sort of did this, this paper, is just to have something, having in mind, you know, the very tight timelines. I wasn't thinking so much about the legal aspects of it. For me, it was mostly just sketching out how we could address the debt issue if we had to. None of these solutions is very good, very satisfactory. They're all very messy and cumbersome. And that is in fact, one of the reasons why we did that Section 9 alternative proposal. However, all of those four, in my view, are better than the default articles. So my thought in drawing this up was basically, because for what you were mentioning though, it crosses boundaries from education to municipal law, as well as from education governance to municipal governance. So since each one of these options involves the town, then there should be consultations with the town, if they're going to be affected by this. And those, given that, you know, the tightness of the timelines, I was thinking those consultations could perhaps begin, even in the absence of, you know, a legal opinion saying which option is, you know, is okay, which maybe is not okay. It may be possible through the consultation process to quickly narrow down what the town, what town everyone can live with and what, you know, what is just not acceptable. So that we wouldn't have to get opinions on all of the, all of the options, but just on those that seem to be at least somewhat acceptable. I don't know if that would, you know, make things more efficient, but it's part of an education that I think, I know I studied. And I imagine that, you know, other boards, both school boards and select boards, will need as well. In trying to just grasp what the implications are of this.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to say a couple of things. And I think we're talking about a kind of nested bunch of issues all at once.
Yeah.
I don't know to what extent folks have had the opportunity to review the entirety of what the agency at the Education State Board released. It includes the default articles commentary, a whole timeline of like what's supposed to unfold when. It's a beast, and it really, you know, this is a ton of things, like having a, if they mandate a merger, you know, we're supposed to have a new union district-wide public meeting in which all voters would be invited. It's warned. They would come, transitional board members would be sworn in. There's a whole laundry list of like decisions that the public is supposed to vote on from the floor about sort of how things are supposed to proceed and what's going to happen. Then there's a choice, to some extent, about whether we want to schedule a second, then, union district-wide public meeting in which voters could choose to vote to amend the articles that are amendable, per, you know, sort of what the state board is saying. You know, meanwhile, you've got this transitional board coming online. You've got, you know, a budget having to get worked up by, you know, the spring. It's, it's nuts. And so there's both the, just sort of purely practical and logistical kind of aspects of having to wrap our collective, you know, minds around that and have some discussions about, you know, how will we prepare for that? And then there's a question of, also, I think, you know, I think there are differences of opinion about to what extent, or to what lengths we might go to resist some of this or try to change it, what kind of costs we're willing to incur in order to, you know, try to change or resist some of it. And that's a conversation, quite honestly, we have not yet had as boards, and one that we have to have very, very soon, I think. So that's a much broader sort of constellation of things than, you know, this, than just the debt issue. And I would suggest that we really need to, you know, we can't really get into that conversation tonight, but I would suggest that we at the very least need to get into that conversation at our next executive committee meeting in two weeks. And that we will need to get into that conversation at the Carisom meeting on the 26th. It will form, I think, a substantial part of the agenda that evening. And with that in mind, I would really encourage strongly everyone to read those documents, as mind-numbing as they are to look at, because there's just incredible information in there. I think Alan Gilbert on our board called it breathtaking. He was really kind of shocked by the speed and scope with which things are supposed to unfold.
Well, is that, is the intent to just, it's almost like a shock and awe, where you just don't have time to do anything? Where it tends to mean like that is, maybe, maybe what we should do is refuse to do it.
Well, again, I don't want to have that conversation tonight. I hear, I hear you where you're coming from. But I think if we start down, that's, that's the rabbit hole to me, is if we start talking about that, we'll be here until 2:00 in the morning.
No, I get it.
But the, I don't know. I mean, it's, maybe it's probably a shock and awe thing, but I think you could also read it as someone working backward from the dates that are in the law about when the union districts are supposed to be operational, July 1st next year. And you work backward from there, and all the things that have to happen in order for that to be the case, with the state board's plan coming on November 30th. You know, someone kind of drew up this, this game plan.
But, you know, there's, in this process, there's been modification or supposed modification and discussion all along the way. And I can't, you know, this rigidity is kind of odd to me, because we haven't even had articles. We haven't had a lot of this information until the 11th hour. You know, and to me, this is a strategy that we've seen since the beginning, you know, forcing us into this role and not really giving time to be able to put thought and effort into this. I mean, this is not the mark of people that know what they're doing in terms of logistically making this kind of change, unless it's done with intent. I don't mean to sound paranoid, but, I mean, I fairly, I mean, watching this process, I mean, it's been done with some thought and effort. And this really bothers me. You know, I don't know where this is coming from. When everyone, even in this room, and I'm sure all municipalities around the state, or many of them, are, you know, we're really uncomfortable with this. And now, you know, we're still being infuddled. I mean, every single bit of input that we seem to be put in seems to be peeled away and peeled away. But, and to me, this is more like a Nazi approach. I mean, I, honestly, this is not democracy. This is our communities. This is our schools. This really bothers me that we're even being forced into this. And I, I think we need to put as much work as we can into figuring out what we have to do here with these articles, but it's sounding like we're, you know, we're putting a lot of work in, and it may be for nothing. Are we going to still be forced into that same, you know, still right toward the bolt, you know, in that shoot? And I really, you know, the more I see this, the more it really makes me angry, and, you know, we say no. We just say, no, we're not doing this. Take us to court. Come and take our schools. And maybe that's, maybe that's where we go.
So, Ray, I hear you. I do, and I.
I'd like to say something.
I, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead, Matt, and finish that, but I would like to say something.
I would like to have that conversation, but we have 12 minutes left in this meeting. And I really do have, for personal reasons, to go, hopefully at the scheduled end of it. But I just want to note that there is a very large conversation, many large conversations to be had, and we have to, and again, I'm suggesting that we queue them up that way, as I suggested. We also need to have a conversation, I think, about whether we may need to have a more frequent, you know, meeting schedule or a different kind of meeting schedule this fall as an executive committee, where, you know, we're meeting every two weeks. Maybe we're scheduling three-hour meetings, because it just seems to me like there's a ton of stuff we really could be talking about, so.
I just want one comment. Act 49 was written that was not, was to make people, and Section 7, we proposed it not be as strict, any stricter than the preferred models. And this, to me, is stricter. But never mind that conversation. I think the most important thing for our district, because that's what we worked on so much. Our biggest complaint was the debt issue. So for me, either hiring somebody or getting a verbal opinion from the legal people regarding these four options, to me, something about that is the most important thing right now. Then having more meetings is good, but I think that's where we need to start, because if we can fix anything, that's the one we need to.
Yeah, I agree with that completely.
I just have a suggestion, I'm going to the lawyer, that we have a letter from Paul Giuliani. We have a letter from Paul Giuliani from back on February 28, 2017. We asked him this question so we could, we could start with that letter. And he had given us an option and asked specifically the new lawyer, because it's not Paul, but I suggest that we start with, with Paul. If we could use, he had said that in Title 16, in Section 723, there's a small piece that said if something is agreed before, you could, within the districts, before the district ceased to exist. That's the part that Marty, I don't know if you guys, Marty Edie, I'm gonna say, have been working on for a little bit. So if we could just start with that letter. I don't want to spend, personally, I feel like we had, I don't want to go in a rabbit hole. I think, I think we gotta use the, we spent three and a half years looking at Act 46 and there's a lot of stuff that, you know, that we forget that we had looked at. So let's try to use the stuff that we have, have him look at the options, which my only problem with the options as they are right now is that they haven't been shared with the boards and that there's more numbers that need to be done for those, in my mind, for those options to be realistic. So, so I think it's a good place to start. But my only suggestion is like, could we just stick with Paul and maybe say it's a couple of hours? And then if there's an opening, then we do, we do, we do more. But that's, that's it. But I think we have a lot of resources in there already that we could take back out that were not specific to those options, but it's trying to do something with the debt. I think that there's agreement within all of the districts that we want to do something different that, you know, it's not good or something, I feel like it's giving you all the debt. But, you know, the options are not favorable for, for either, right? So we have to figure out a way to make that work. If by any chance, and in 723, I'm not going to read the whole thing, there's a little piece that keeps an opening to maybe have some conversations.
That's part of, part of this, yeah. I don't know if you remember, Flor, but Paul, Paul said, yeah, the law allows it. This is why I refer to it as a head fake at the state board meeting. Because it makes it look as though you can do it. But then when you try to do it, you can't.
Well, because there's a lot of statute because you cease to exist. So what, what I'm trying to say is like, let's try to just give it to the lawyer, like explore the options and not spend too much time in this because there's so many other things that we want to make sure, we don't want to lose all our time in, in this because there's a lot of articles of agreement and we want to be proactive because we have very limited time.
So I have a suggestion as a way to kind of tie this off. So again, I think this much larger conversation, critical though it is, is one we can't have this evening. But I agree with what Dorothy said. I think that on the debt issue, you know, we've all discussed this enough and it's featured prominently enough in our AGS proposal, which we've all adopted. And I think we all feel some level of discomfort on it, you know, wherever we may stand on the larger issues. So it seems to me like it's probably worth asking an attorney some key questions. I think one of them is, and, you know, the default article that addresses consolidation of assets and liabilities is Article 5. And Article 5 cannot be amended by the board or by voters. So the first question is, do we have any legal argument for contesting that, that, you know, stipulation of what the state board is putting in? Is there any, is there any sort of legal grounds for us to say, well, that's not consistent with the law? And actually, there's, you know, we should, we should have the ability to do something different there. That's the first question. And then I think the second question is around, I think broadly speaking, if a transfer of property between a school district and a town, you know, could reasonably feature in some kind of way of dealing with assets and liabilities as they are transferred. And then maybe, you know, a third question about tax rates, which maybe is down the line. It also strikes me that because the debt issue is one that we are, we have all expressed our collective concern about, to your point, Stephen, you know, it, it's valuable for us to have, you know, a considered legal opinion about what even is possible for us to do about that issue or not in any eventuality that comes down the line. So that's just to address your sort of concern about why are we doing something that tilting a windmill is, I think, a little bit. So I'd describe it. So that would be my suggestion and I think some modest amount of money, like, you know, in the $3,000 to $5,000 range to authorize, you know, for attorneys to get started on thinking about that stuff. And maybe even hopefully, you know, who knows if they'll have anything for us to consider in two weeks or if it's going to take longer than that, but...
So I'd make a motion, if it's a good point to do that. I was going to say 10.
I think 10's a better...
$10,000 at $250 an hour, 40 hours work.
I just, I, I do want to say a little bit of, you know, make the motion as you want, but you were just talking about a legal fund, you know, to deal with a whole host of issues, not just this one. And I, and we've already spent money on our 706B committee. So again, there's a larger question here about sort of what ultimate ceiling of money are we willing to spend on all this different stuff? That's why I'm a little leery about sort of jumping out of the gauntlet, but that's all I wanted to say.
Remember that we've got to live with this. So this is a place, we, if we don't get this right, we're screwed, so...
Yeah, we're going to spend a lot more.
I'm sorry, I apologize, I jumped on the...
Let me finish my motion. So it was to set a ceiling of $10,000 for legal work. And I like the framing of your first two questions around what legal options may exist around this article. I'm not, I'm just trying to frame it. And then the second one, and I, I won't even attempt to use the same language, but I like those two questions as a starting point. So there would be a pool of money set aside with the understanding that the immediate concern is debt and starting with an opinion on what legal options can be recommended around that. And then again, whatever your second question was. Your two questions seem like very good questions to pull...
The second question was about whether an exchange of assets between a town and a school district could, could feature in some, you know, theoretical mechanism.
An agreement, more or less an internal agreement.
Wouldn't we just focus on these options for him to explore?
Well, I think that's what Matthew's question does.
Because that would cover town, school...
I certainly would encourage the attorneys to look at this, but, you know, I would ask them to, to go where their training and their, you know, sort of judgment would take them.
Oh, we have to, but to at least look at these and then go beyond with that, the debt thing, not everything, anything else.
And I would suggest that, because you raised Article 5, Matthew, that, that we have any legal opinion that is not be stopped by it, say, because ultimately we may be talking about a political situation in terms of making a proposal to the state board. And if we don't get a legal opinion that, you know, goes beyond Article 5 about what the potential debt sharing options are, I think will be a better situation if we, if we do that. So rather than just saying, oh, no, can't do anything about the debt because Article 5, you say, okay, what can we do, you know, put Article 5 aside? What makes sense in under Scott's options? Because at least we'll have the information. And it turns out they're, can't do anything because of Article 5, we'll, we'll know that. In terms of the number...
I'm sorry, because there's a motion. I just want to see if we have the wording of the motion before we...
All I have is that Stephen Look moved to set a ceiling of $10,000 for legal work to begin with asking, number one, what legal op, what legal options may exist around Article 5? And number two, whether some exchange of assets between a town and school district is possible with the understanding that the immediate issue is debt.
That's quite a motion.
I see a very long list.
Can we just paraphrase, like, the money? Because the money is clear and we can talk about what questions to submit subsequently.
I would take a friendly motion just to make a, my motion would be to set a $10,000 ceiling for legal work around Act 46.
And second one. Act 46, okay. And there's a second, so discussion.
Any opinion that we get, we should be in writing because when you require a lawyer to put it into writing, they put in their rationale and, you know, verbal opinions can get mucked up and lost and you don't know, you may not get to the why that opinion is, just, that's my opinion. So I would possibly make sure we have any opinion in writing, even if it's more expensive because it could be something to look at and hold in your hand. I see my fellow lawyer nodding.
I'm agreeing with you too.
Yes, go ahead.
And just to follow on that, if it can include actual language, implementation language, that would be, that would go in the article. Because that's what has always tripped us up in the past when people say, oh, sure, you can solve your debt issue. Just, okay, show me how, great, I just want to see. And they've never been able to actually show language that does it. So I would, I would be very happy and I think insisting that there be something, they have something to show and not just sort of opining.
On the theoretical possibility.
Yeah.
That's, that's one of my concerns about. I like Paul, I'll be going back to Paul to ask, that's frankly one of my concerns about Paul.
Yeah.
Could I, could I make a point of clarification here? There's a motion on the table that specifically does not address specifics. And because my impression was no one wanted to talk specifics at this time. So I would like us to vote on the motion. And then when we come together at our next meeting, then we'll begin to refine what the specifics were.
If I understand you correctly, what you're saying then is that we would be asking Bill to wait to spend any of that money or engage the services of attorneys on these questions until we meet again?
I was trying to suggest what the questions might be. And I get pushback.
For the board, we did have a motion and a second, just about the $10,000. We never had a vote on it, we really didn't discuss that. I would like to have a vote on that. And then if we want to go beyond that, we have to do that.
Okay, so there is a call for a vote on the motion that's on the table. The motion is, Lisa, could you read it back once again for my sake?
To set a ceiling of $10,000 for legal work around Act 46.
And do you want to specify it to the debt or to, or not Article 5?
Right, that's the motion.
Okay, that's fine, I just want to, that's it.
Okay, is there any further discussion, excuse me?
Yeah, I don't think that goes far enough. I don't think we want to wait two weeks to ask the question. The question is, do we have any legal options with regard to debt? Because if we got a yes or no to that, then that would answer, that would set us on our next step in this journey.
Wouldn't we want to say specifically what legal options? I mean, that, you don't want to just, I would want to know...
The answer is yes, and I'd like to know conceptually, and then I'd like to know specifically. But I don't want to wait two weeks.
I think as a point of war, you would have to move to amend the motion.
Okay, well, I will move to amend, friendly amendment, to ask the lawyer to let us assess whether we have legal options with regards to debt. And if we do, some indication of what they are.
In an amount not to exceed?
As the person making the motion, I would accept that friendly amendment.
As the person who's saying that? Okay, all right. Is there any further discussion of that amendment, or of that motion?
Yes, friendly amendment to the friendly amendment to incorporate Scott's work as a consideration for the attorneys to look at. So it's not just a blank, because we've already discussed it as a blank. So I would move that as part of the attorney's consideration, they take into account Scott's two-page document detailing on potential options.
Could I ask if it would be possible, rather than including that in the motion language, that we just direct the superintendent to...
That's fine, that's fine with me too.
I got the direction.
Okay.
And that way we just keep the motion a little bit more...
Keep going, I think, at the door.
So, is there any further discussion? Does anyone need the motion run back again so that we, you know, everyone's comfortable? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. I guess I should have asked actually before doing that, Bill, to what extent the budget will bear.
The budget will not bear, but the general fund will. So you're telling me, I am taking, I am interpretous, you just want balance towards that work. And I can figure that out. That'll be more helpful.
So we are six minutes over and I really want to be respectful of everyone's time, including my own. So Kari, would you be, is there anything really urgent that you wanted to bring about communication? Something that we needed to get out right away or do you feel like...
I think we, I feel a responsibility to communicate something to the public, either as a result of tonight's meeting or our next one. Actually, I think the next one would be fun.
I'll just mention that the DODI board actually decided to communicate something out to Worcester about sort of what's going on. I don't know sort of where, you know, rightly, the communication responsibility falls or maybe it falls on all the boards, I don't know. But that maybe there isn't, I don't feel quite as...
Well, we, we just decided to engage exploration with Twinfield. And I assume it's going to be in the local media soon.
Yeah, right. It's a fair, it's a fair assumption, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I'd rather they hear it from us, I guess, so...
Yeah.
So that means tonight, someone giving, so just...
Well, maybe not from us first, but...
Well, I, I can communicate something out, you know, via front porch forums or wherever.
If you get it to me, I'll put it out.
Yeah, just a brief, a brief statement saying about opening the conversation with Twinfield. Certainly, I could also just note that the state board has issued its draft articles of agreement and we're, you know, grappling with.
And we're on it.
Yeah, we're on it.
Words on us.
I think grappling with it is a good term.
So our next meeting will be on the 19th. I may, if no one objects, plan for it to be a slightly longer meeting. And I look forward to seeing you then. And there are no, no other matters, then we're adjourned at 6:53.